Get this to be a more amicable situation, or what can we do?
You can't certainly, well, I can tell you that the judge is not in this week and the court administrator is out, so neither of them are available to attend Friday's meeting of finance and personnel. But in the letter, the judge says she'd like to work cooperatively, so I think it would be entirely appropriate to set up a working session with counsel and the court to see if you can resolve the personnel issues and all of that in a way that's mutually beneficial, yes.
Mr. President, all the problems that we seem to have, again, is not something that we're doing, it's something that they're doing, and we're bringing it to their attention, and in the minute we bring it to their attention, they'll change it, like this whole time issue with Good Friday and people not being there, so we bring it to their attention, and we didn't go behind their back, our minutes are posted, everybody gets our minutes, and now they're going to do their own timekeeping system, the same as they do their own computer system.
Thank you. Yeah, we would continue this discussion, but we have reached our seven o'clock time. Ms. Bell, if you have something for us, you can share it with us in our general meeting?
Okay, I don't.
Okay, thank you. All right, I am going to call, I'm going to call the regular council meeting for Monday, June 17th, 2024 to order at this time, if we would please stand for prayer and pledge. Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all of us present here today, and let your assistance further us so that in every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you, and so begun may through you reach its completion. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Bell, will you call the rule for us this evening?
Ms. Holman?
Present.
Mrs. Mills?
Here.
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Here.
Mrs. Foglio?
Here.
Mr. Guerrero?
Here.
Mr. Simeone?
Here.
Mr. Roskovic?
Here.
Mr. Timmonier?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Augustine?
Here.
Ms. Bell?
Thank you. We have no one absent this evening. I do not believe we have a call for an executive session. We are meeting the requirements of the sunshine law, so we will move on with our approval of the minutes from our last meeting.
June 3rd, 2024, regular council meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM by Council President Roskovic. Ward 4 Counselor Jody Mills offered the opening prayer, and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Present were Mr. Roskovic, Mr. Simeone, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Guerrero, Mrs. Mills, Ms. Holman, and Mrs. De Giacomo. Officers present were City Manager Timmonier, City Solicitor Cecilia Cooper, Finance Director Maria Evros Augustine, and Clerk of Council Bell.
May I have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes in their entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. De Giacomo, and a second by Ms. Holman. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading of the minutes by a seven to zero vote. City Council, are there any, I don't, I know public or safety forces met, and I don't know what, are there any requests for any ordinances or any motions to come out of any committees? I don't believe so, so we will proceed on with the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a few ordinances to ask for. First, I'd like an ordinance to execute change order number one with Koski Construction here in Ash Tabula for the purpose of providing additional work to be done as part of the project for paving our parking lots in the amount not to exceed $9,566.37. Funding for this expense will be taken from Fund 412.
I'll move on that request.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guerrero, second by Ms. Holman, any discussion?
I have a question that could be directly or very indirectly related. Can we get a flag pole at this building also?
I mean, it wouldn't be part of this project, but that's, I think we had a little bit of that discussion earlier.
Oh, in the pre-council?
With the billboard and all that fun stuff, so.
Okay.
I'll fill you in later.
I can.
We had talked about, you know, the entrance sign in the city municipal complex sign and so forth, and then I imagine at that time the flag poles will become part of that, you know.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Can I ask, so if this, I don't know, additional, whatever, $9,000 or whatever, so would that change if somebody comes in with that higher, you don't go back to the other bids and that?
No.
You go the one you took in that?
That's correct. This is just either other work identified, or as they were ripping through the parking lot today, we found some additional stuff that needs to be done.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to execute change order number one with Jay Severino Construction here in Ash Tabula for the purpose of providing additional work to the West 14th Street Sanitary Sewer Overflow Improvement Project in the amount not to exceed $16,523.35, and this will be taken from Fund 504.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Mrs. Foglio moves, and Mrs. Mills seconds, any discussion?
Hi, Mrs. De Giacomo.
Oh, I thought that was, I'm sorry. I'm still distant, you know. Mrs. De Giacomo seconds, thank you, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to execute change order number one with Jack Delhany Companies of Twinsburg, Ohio, for the purpose of providing additional work to the Aquatec Combination Sewer Jet in the amount not to exceed $13,000. Funding for this expense will be taken from Funds 504 and 412.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Mrs. Foglio moves, and Mrs. Mills seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with MC Construction here in Ash Tabula for the purpose of providing, for the purpose of repairing the overhead facade at the city bus garage located at 425 West 24th Street in the amount not to exceed $21,800. Funding for this project will be taken from Fund 412.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Mrs. Foglio moves, and Mrs. De Giacomo seconds. Any discussion?
Mr. Manager, so since this is AX and the county uses it, does any other municipality pitch in?
No. So our in-kind contribution to the AX bus system is the free use of that building. We are responsible for the envelope of the building or any of the mechanicals. I think we split the HVAC 50/50 if there's a major issue with it, and then they're responsible for anything inside the building. And then we also contribute 30, I think it's $30,000 a year towards the system, and I believe we're still the only political subdivision in the county that contributes like that. But we also have the most routes, so.
Do they foresee with, you know, some of the housing and senior housing and that for transportation to expand in the city? Are you seeing any need?
We haven't had those discussions with them.
Okay.
Mr. President, I have one more. Mr. Manager, I know this is, put this on your list of things to do, but the outside of the building where you actually dump the bags, are we planning on doing something? Because it's like going.
Yeah, it's, that's just, yeah, I mean, it's just basically a gravel parking lot. We have tried to level it, flatten it out, make it a little bit harder. Unfortunately, we're constantly inundated with bags there, so I'd like to get rid of that drop off.
Oh, okay, this is a different thing, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right, I'm just following along. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I'd like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development, Office of Community Infrastructure in Columbus, Ohio, for the purpose of administering the Community Development Block Grant Program revolving loan funds.
Mr. President, I move on manager's recommendation.
Second. Ms. Holman moves, and Mr. Simeone seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
And just a few things for FYI, I have reappointed Mr. Nick Iroche, or I'm sorry, Mr. Nick Detour, as a member of the City of Ash Tabula Planning Commission for another term, that his next term would expire in May of 2027. Even though we do have Juneteenth coming up here on Wednesday, the city offices will be closed, however, garbage will be picked up on time, so if you have Wednesday pickup, Thursday pickup, or Friday pickup, just put your garbage out on normal time, and we will pick those up. We had some, we still continue to get questions about paving. Again, I will say that the asphalt that is out there right now on the state routes, both Route 84 and State Route 531, that is just the intermediate course, the base course. The final project has not been done yet. We have had some rumblings that possibly Wednesday, they will start laying the top layer, which will then cap everything off, and when that's done, the project is still not done. They will then be going out, and any other manhole adjustments or valve replacements or valve adjustments that need to be done will be done after that. So again, that project, I believe, runs till August, sometime in August or September is their completion date, but they have been ahead of schedule, and it looks like we'll get that top coat hopefully this week. If not, it's coming up, it's coming up soon there. As far as our paving project goes, we have had the pre-construction meeting to discuss some things and some timing. It looks like they will be in town July, the week of July 15th to start milling and doing their work, so that will be our paving project that will start mid-July. I believe that one has a completion date of sometime in September. I believe that's all I have for my report right now.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the city manager a question. Until they pave the final coat, I'm assuming that we're not going to have crosswalks?
That's correct.
That is correct? I did get a couple of complaints, one of them was a handicap guy. Is there any possible way we could just put one of those floppy road sign things, kind of like in the middle of the road that says crosswalk until?
So we don't have any more of those? The four that we have are out in places, we have two at ACMC and, I'm sorry, six of them, two on, two at ACMC, two on Bridge Street, and two up on Main Avenue. Those are the only signs we have. They're about, I think, $300 or $400 a piece. Yeah, they're not cheap. And by the time they get here, they should be, they'll do the painting shortly after they do the top coat, yeah. And then our crosswalk, the regular roads that we're not paving, we will be out painting those potentially this week and next week.
Thank you.
But I'm wondering about their top coat this weekend, beach glass festival, if they put it down, will it be able to be walked on this weekend?
Yes, but we have made them aware that that beach glass starts Saturday morning, early morning, so if they're going to do this, you know, there, I think, well, all that's left is between an inch or three quarters of an inch that they lay down, that'll go pretty quick. I wouldn't be surprised if they're done within two days with the top coat.
I just wonder if they, you know, especially with this heat.
It should, it should be okay.
All right.
Mr. President?
Oh, one minute, and one minute, and I, my second question was, did we publish the list of paved roads?
Um, I believe, I believe we did.
Did we?
I think it was sent. Now I send it to you guys, so.
Yeah, you sent it to us.
And it was in the packet when we put the bid out.
Yeah, and I didn't know if it was out, okay, as long as people know, I'm sorry, Ms. Holman, go ahead.
Yes, I'm, question for Counselor Guero, will I pronounce that right? Is the sign that, I'm trying to understand, the sign that you're referring to, is it for folks who are wheelchair-bound?
Well, no, it would just be the regular, it looks like this, but it's got like a weighted thing on the bottom. It's a little, it's a little flexible, if somebody hits it. It just says crosswalk or stop or.
Yeah.
Temporary, as opposed to the one that's painted on the ground, that way people know that that, yeah, that's the crosswalk, even though it's not, for lack of their term, plastered on the, on the street, so we put the second coat on. I was just wondering if we could throw a few more of those up in some of these danger areas like by Lakeway?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that one, we could, yeah, that's, that'll be, once they come through there, they'll, they'll paint those shortly after that.
So my question, thank you for that clarification. So my question to Mr. Timmonier is, you mentioned this is an expensive thing to do, might there be any nearby local municipalities that might have some that we could just use or borrow in the short term?
Really, the only other places that I've seen these are Geneva and the Lake, and those are usually, those are out on their streets. I think we and Geneva and the Lake are the only two municipalities that use those in the roads.
Just trying to think of brainstorm other options that we might have to make sure that folks have a proper signage, communication, as well as safety. Mr. President, I, just one more thing, what you said about the signs at Lakeway, I remember getting something from, probably from the same man, a wheelchair, something about the crosswalk lights, when they press them to get across the street, they're not working. So could you just, just check on those?
Let me look at that, sure.
Mr. Manager, can you update us what, because there was quite a few things on Facebook, and I had a couple calls, where the dig was on Bridge Street, when they, you know, they had to close by, sort of by Halbert and, you know, because it was like, I just did the street, now you're, but was that like a lateral in there, or was it?
There was a, there was a, we saw a sinkhole develop, but when we did the exploratory dig, it, there was nothing wrong with the pipes, anything like that. We did replace a section that looked kind of bad, but there was no material within the pipe. There was a railroad tie underneath there, we think it may have compressed, and that's what caused the sinkhole, but we had to do an exploratory dig there.
Railroad tie?
Yeah, there's still railroad ties in a lot of places in the city, yeah. Between brick and railroad ties, there, they continue to do a number on the roads. So again, because it's just the intermediate course, everything's been repaired, and then the top coat will go over top a bit.
That's good.
Yep.
And then will they have those, you know, because that also, on Bridge Street, even though those standing up ones are right there to cross by Halbert and then down by?
The bridge.
Yeah.
Goodwill.
People are, they, they don't even heed the warning of that one standing up, it's, it's pretty bad.
Typically, those get hit at least once a week, yeah.
Mr. Pres, oh, Mr. President?
Yes?
I have, and if you already talked about these things, I apologize in advance. For, can you just give an update on Smithfield? I get asked about that daily. When is Smithfield starting?
Yeah, I'm confused by that, but, Smithfield, I'm not sure when it's going to start, the completion date, because that is grant funded, is August 30th, so they have until August 30th to complete the project. We haven't had a pre-con, I know they've submitted all their materials to our engineer for approval, so, and they're almost wrapped up on the Ohio Avenue Extension Sewer Line project, which was due, which is due at, I think, mid-July as a completion date, they're almost done with that. So once they finish there, they're going to hop over there.
Thank you. And I have one more question that somebody just asked me about. You never know when you go to a ballgame, what questions are going to be asked for council. On Lake Avenue, that project, I think it came from the county, where they were going to put in the shopping, shop, isn't that, that's?
Lake and Fourth.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah, you're talking about between West Third, West Fourth, and Lake Avenue, yeah. I believe he is, did he bring stuff to the plant, to the Architecture Review Board yet?
Where's this at?
West Third, West Fourth, Lake Avenue, where we had the church torn down across from the old Harbor High School.
Oh, a long, long time ago.
No, but I thought there was something more recent.
He hasn't been to the Architecture Board lately?
Yeah, so, I mean, the project is still progressing, I know at one time he was waiting, kind of looking at interest rates, waiting for those to go down. It sounds like they will start with housing first and then do the front part second, but they own the property now from the land bank. Yeah.
They haven't come to the board yet.
I thought they had come already. I'll check, I'll check on that tomorrow.
Mr. Manager, I, somebody asked me, is Officer D'Angelo working like the footbeat this summer?
Mm-hmm.
So he's doing like the downtown and Harbor?
Yep, and in the parks, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Ms. Cooper?
I don't have any report today, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Augustine?
Yes, Mr. President, we are requesting an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into contract for custody account with Huntington National Bank for the city of Ash Tabula as part of the discretionary investment management services contract with Meda Public Fund.
Mr. President? I move on the finance director's recommendation.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Ms. Foglio, and a second from Mrs. De Giacomo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Mr. President, we requesting an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into contract for discretionary investment management services with Meda Public Fund for the city of Ash Tabula.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move on the finance director's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Ms. Holman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Bell, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do not.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Okay, we will go on to our committee reports, community development and economic development.
So our next meeting is June 26th, 5:00 here.
June 25th?
25th, I was just testing you, John, good call.
Yeah, I can't be.
And then you have a guest that night?
I do.
And who would that be?
So we're going to have Dave Thomas, and he's going to talk about property taxes and tax abatement, and then the Solicitor's Office will also be there, and we will be discussing changes to zoning.
Okay. Thank you, all right, we will see you then, then. Finance and Personnel?
Our next meeting is this Friday, June 21st, at 8:30.
Thank you. Public Works?
Our next meeting is Tuesday, the 25th, at 8:30 AM, right here.
8:30 AM, right?
8:30 AM.
Yeah. Thank you, okay. Safety Forces, I do have just a brief, we had a meeting last week, and we were checking on, making sure that everything was ready for the summer festivals, and they, the police department felt that they were all in good shape to go, they would have them all covered appropriately. We had some extra, you know, between the Pride Festival, then we had the Juneteenth Festival, then our regular festivals, so they've been busy, but they felt, they felt that they had been prepared for all of those. And then the, their numbers and the fire department numbers seem to be consistent, which has happened in the past, the number of arrests and callouts and so forth. There was a brief discussion, and I want to mention it only because we, there's a larger discussion out there in the community about, you know, we've all been aware that this young, young boy died in Conyot in a drowning accident, and we did mention it at the Safety Forces meetings, what would have been done differently, or what could have been done in a situation like that, I think there was just not anything that would, could have been handled differently, it was just, you know, a tragic situation, we all know of our, we all know of our Lake Erie and how fickle she can be and dangerous at times. But I have, I have gotten calls, I know other counselors too, about, you know, flags and some kind of protocol and so forth, so I assume that, I know we mentioned, maybe the fire department is discussing those, or the city.
Mr. President, so what I have done, our sign company that we usually use, OD, I think it was ODNR, has a pretty good riptide warning sign that just talks about riptides, it's not a flag system or anything like that. I've requested a quote for signage that we would put both near the boardwalk and then on the back area as you go into a beach, both in English and in Spanish, so we're waiting for those quotes to come in. Our lake, our part of the lake is a little bit different than both Lake Shore Park and Conyot, because of the way the beach is kind of in Conyot, behind the break wall and all of the different structures that are in the lake, it creates a much different current than what we have. Our current just basically comes right off the lake, we don't have those things to contend with. It doesn't mean that we don't have rip currents, we do have rip currents, but they're not as, I guess you'd say profound as they are in Conyot. It's still a concern, obviously you know that we hire every year lifeguards, not all the beaches in Ash Tabula County have lifeguards, ours actually start, I think it's next weekend they start full-time, but we'll, we'll look at that signage. There's also another system out there that we've explored, I have no idea what the cost is, we've requested some information on it, but it's a cellular type device that has LED lights on it, that, and it talks with the National Weather Service, and if you have high rip currents or anything like that, it would indicate either green for everything's okay, yellow or red, there again, it has to have that communication, the weather service has to know which beaches have what, so it's more complicated than just putting it up. But we will look at at least, at minimum, the signage warning of what potentially could be a hazard, yeah.
Mr. President, how, how about getting that flag system, at least where, maybe put one on the lifeguard stand, I mean, and it, I mean, just for?
You'd have to have the staff to be able to do it 24/7 and on the weekends.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it is a concern, like I said, everyone is so unfortunate what's happened, but we, you know, there's so much we can do. Would I be correct in sharing, did they mention that one of the firemen in Conyot went into the water on a rope, he was tethered to the land, and they still had?
Yes.
Trouble getting him back, so?
Yeah, you know, there was a lot of different reports, there was reports that he was unattended, the mother was within, from what I understand, arm's length of him.
Yeah, right, yeah.
They were in less than knee-deep water, it just knocked him off his feet, and they almost not only lost mom and the boy, but the firefighter had a tremendous amount of trouble.
Getting back, yeah.
Getting back, yeah, so.
Mr. President?
Yes?
So, am I to understand this is going to be a topic at the next Safety Force meeting?
I mean, we could put it on the agenda to find, Mr. Timmonier could at that time report his findings to us, and we could see what direction we can go in then.
Thank you.
Can I say thank you for being proactive on this, because I think it's, I think it's important, it's a good start. People don't realize how shallow our lake is, and it turns really quick, so thank you for that.
I, you know, the best, I think everybody's best course, and of course, those of us who live in Ash Tabula County or near the lake, you know, if you have a weather app, you get bombarded with those currents and different things all the time, making sure those are set are a good idea. We've even discussed, you know, just a, like a QR code that would go to the National Weather Service to show, you know, the area, but there again, you have to have your location set and everything on your phone. We do have a link on our website that shows the beach quality, and when you go to that beach quality site, it also will direct you other areas for the conditions of the lake, so that can be checked at any time. That's been on our site forever.
Mr. President, and, and thank you for mentioning that, and while I do appreciate the attention to multiple languages, the diversity of the Spanish and English, I would also hope that the readability is unfortunately low enough where even children could understand, as well as some
as well as some visuals for those folks who don't have reading skills can tell by the visual representation.
I can send you what the ODNR has published. That is what I asked for the quote on. I can send that to Council to see.
Mr. Manager, do they do, um, expanding on that education, like, in the elementary schools locally? Because you know how that is, and when we were all younger and that, you just run down the beach, you just run in, you just, and, and we all learned how to swim. And I think there's a lot of people who don't know how to swim or just basic water safety discussion, do they?
I don't believe they do that in the schools, no.
I, I will, I'm sorry, if I might as further answer. Chief, am I correct that water safety is gonna be part of Safety Town this year or water awareness? I thought I saw that on a post.
That's not something that we discussed, but that's certainly something that we could include.
Oh, that's a great idea. Thank you. Perfect, perfect opportunity, 'cause isn't that going into kindergarten?
Yeah.
That group?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, continuing on, the Planning Commission was, uh, was going to meet on June the 20th. That meeting has been moved to July the 2nd. And there are, some might have done the agenda, but we'll wait to our next meeting to, to make sure that agenda is finalized. The Historic Preservation Committee had a meeting last week. They approved, um, new signs for the Goodwill Building in the Harbor. And, you know, they're having their big anniversary, so they're updating their look there, so the, uh, Architecture Board approved new signs for the Goodwill Building. They approved some outdoors, um, not so much seating, but like an awning. It's not really an awning, it's like, uh, one of those things you hang on your patio to keep the sun out. They approved one of those, uh, for Renix Meat Market. They approved some, uh, benches for the Carlisle Pavilion down there on, um, is that Morton Drive? Or, no?
Yes.
And is Morton Drive too? Yes. They approved the cup, the, uh, they were able to get a hold of a couple benches, so they approved allowing those benches uh, on the, uh, Pavilion at Morton Drive. And then they did table, they tabled a motion of, uh, some gentleman wanted, was interested in putting a cement pad. Uh, and they just didn't have enough information, it didn't reach them in time, so they tabled that, uh, until they can learn more about it. So that was the Architecture Commission. Uh, anything for the Ad-Hoc Committee? Ms. Holman, anything or no?
Next meeting date is July 10th, here in this building, 6 o'clock p.m.
All right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to our legislative part of our agenda. If you, we have, uh, let's see, seven pieces of legislation. Anyone here who would like to talk about any of these items? Uh, one is for, uh, change order for parking lot paving, a change order for, uh, West 14th Street paving. Um, the, uh, ord, authorizing the city manager to repair the, uh, I forget the name of the truck.
Aquatec.
Aquatec Truck, thank you. Um, and then two ordinances from the Finance Department concerning our investments. Uh, and then an ordinance to enter into a contract for the facade repair at the bus garage on 24th Street. And then an ordinance entering into a contract with Jefferson Healthcare, right? Anyone would like to address any of these items? Seeing no one, we will move on with our legislation. Uh, Ms. Bell, would you read us tonight's legislation, please?
Ordinance number 2024-67, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into change order number one with Koski Construction Company for the parking lot paving project at the Health and Fire Department as well as City Hall. Ordinance number 2024-68, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into, enter into change order number one with J. Severino Construction Company for the OPWC West 14th Street SSO Improvements Project. Ordinance number 2024-69, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one with Jack Donahue Companies Incorporated for additional repairs of the Aquatec Combination Sewer Cleaner. Ordinance number 2024-71, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for discretionary investment management services with Meeter Public Funds Incorporated for the city of Ashtabula. Ordinance number 2024-72, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter, to enter into a contract with MC Construction to repair the overhang and facade at 425 West 24th Street, Ashtabula, Ohio. Ordinance number 2024-73, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Jefferson Healthcare for the purpose of providing employee health, dental, and vision insurance coverage for the period of July 1st, 2024 through Ju, through June 30th, 2025.
And, and, uh, we, ordinance 2024-7.
My apologies, they were paper clipped together.
Yeah, that's.
Ordinance number 2024-70, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for custody accounts within Huntington National Bank for the city of Ashtabula as part of the discretionary investment management services contract with Meeter Public Funds Incorporated.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Is it Council's desire to handle these items in consent agenda format?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mrs. De Giacomo. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will use consent agenda format by a seven to zero vote. May I have a motion to waive the reading of the entire, uh, legislation?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mrs. De Giacomo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the entire reading by a seven to zero vote. May I have a motion to waive the charter requirements of two readings?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Holman, second by Mr. Guerrero. Any discussion? Would you please call the roll, Ms. Bell?
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
So we waive two readings by a seven to zero vote. We will not vote on passage of the legislation?
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
All items of legislation this evening have been adopted by a seven to zero vote. Thank you very much. Okay, we have any unfinished business from last week? Any new business this evening? Mr. Timmerne, any new business this evening?
Aye.
No?
Mr. President, I don't have any.
Okay. The agenda has, are, are we tabling that item or moving that? Item, the, reopen the hearing on the Planning Commission?
No, you, I, I would recommend you guys discuss it tonight, yes.
Oh, okay. Do we, do we have any paperwork on that or?
No, it'd just be, um, what I had emailed earlier. Um, you had, Council had asked me to try to mediate, uh, between, uh, the owners and the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, we tried to do that. Um, basically, what I have recommended to Council um, is a modification of the, um, decision, uh, which would allow the owners to keep the brick. Um, however, all of the trim that exists, uh, at the building would need to be painted the dark brown color that already exists on the building. Um, and that would be, uh, up to Council whether to modify that decision or not.
Okay, so the, basically, uh, Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay.
We just found this today. So the Architecture Board said that they were not interested. At last meeting, we reported that they were not interested in having any further say on this matter.
Correct.
And so then, because of the, uh, motion that, uh, was given to you to, uh, have some discussion with this, that's why we're back at this topic.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Timmerne.
May, Mr. President, may I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
So, we need a motion that we accept your modification, is that?
You would need a motion to modify the decision of the Architecture Review Board.
Because the Architecture Review Board decision was appealed to Plating and Community Development.
Right.
They affirmed the decision of the Architecture Board, so now that decision of Plating and Community Development has been appealed to City.
Plating Commission, okay. Yeah, so you would need to modify the decision of the Planning Commission, um, which would allow for the modification of that decision, which would allow the owners to keep the brick that's currently there. However, painting, also painting the existing trim that's on the building and on the doorway and on the other side of the building, uh, all the dark brown color that exists on the building.
So can I just say, I, I will make the motion of everything you just said?
Excuse me, we don't, we don't have any of that in writing, so I, I don't understand how we're gonna vote on a resolution or vote on something that we don't have in writing.
So,
Mr. President.
If I'm not mistaken, you're making a decision tonight, which then would accompany, be accompanied by a letter to the owners, whether you have upheld the decision of the Planning Commission, which goes back to the Architecture Review Board, that it has to be removed. Um, or if there is five votes for the modification, then the letter would be written to the owner stating Council has approved a modification to that decision, which includes allowing the brick and painting the trim to match that color. There's not like a ordinance or a resolution, it would just be a vote of Council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I can't help but wonder if this is a bit premature. Um, I'm not sure if everyone has had an opportunity to, um, read the recommendation. Um, I have also received, um, communication around, um, the process and perhaps some other considerations and would want us to have an opportunity to explore that before making a motion and voting tonight without all the information.
So, I have no other information to add to it, so I don't know where, where other information was coming from. You asked me to try to mediate, that's my recommendation.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'll, I'll second Ms. Haynes.
Okay, wait a minute, didn't that?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Now, we'll, we'll go back to the start. Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Can I, can I ask, um, Mr. Manager, so back to the last time we left here and we were hoping there would be some kind of a resolution, so did everybody sit down at the table together and back and forth or like how did?
No, it wasn't, we, we-
Can we backtrack to how did it?
Yeah, so we, um, originally had a discussion with the owners about what they were willing to do. Uh, we interjected some ideas, uh, into that conversation. Um, we then went back to the, uh, Art Historic Preservation Commission and said, here are some ideas. Uh, they weren't willing to budge off of their original, they want the brick gone. Um, so, in my opinion, this is kind of a happy compromise between the two.
So, thank you for that. In addition, thank you for raising that, Counselor Mills. And I think this speaks to the importance of us getting really clear, real clear about our expectations and process, 'cause it was also my expectation that both parties would sit down together and have conversation and exchange and brainstorm. Um, and I understand that didn't happen, and, um, again, it would be my request or recommendation that we review that process in hopes of finding something that's potentially more amicable than we're, what we know currently.
So, um, okay, so then, we, we, yes, we could have a motion, uh, to move on what is being discussed tonight, or we could have a motion, uh, to, uh, table this discussion, however we want to handle that, but so, right now there is not a motion, so.
I move that we table the conversation until we can, um, have face-to-face conversation and explore both the process and what, um, has been recommended and that we, is there something more I need to say about that or just?
Okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Holman to table this item. Uh, I will second it for this, you know, so that, um, we can move forward with our discussion. Go ahead. Now, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, we, we've been down this, I mean, we've been down this road before. You know, we're, we're at a stop. The, the Commission's not gonna budge and they just, you know, they want to paint their building and, and, you know, we can table it forever, but it, it's, we're still gonna come to the same conclusion. The board's not gonna budge, and we don't have, you know, because I remember, what, the, two weeks ago, when I made the motion, um, to, was upheld, appeal, upheld the appeal, reverse the appeal. And Ms. Holman came in and said that, you know, she wanted, uh, uh, them to work together, and, and that was good, that was great, and we did that. And now we're, we're back here again. I just, I just don't see an end coming to it.
And, um, thank you for your, um, thought, Counselor Foglio. And I don't believe that it's as cut and dry as that, and I do believe that we can approach it with, um, more thought and ideas that'll get us to a different place, and that's what I'm asking for, is an opportunity to share that so that we are all informed before we just move to vote.
Mr. President, if I might?
Yes, please.
At, at some point, a decision has to be made. This was an appeal of a decision of the Planning Commission. Whatever the decision is, the parties have a right to appeal that, but they can't, that appeal process doesn't start for, for, until this board makes a final decision and that decision is reduced to writing and given to the parties, so.
So, uh,
I just want to make your-
Ms. Cooper, so, say, the, um, the Architecture Board originally said, no, last, at our last meeting, we voted to, um, I, I don't know what we voted to, I don't think we voted on it, did we?
The manager.
Oh, for, okay.
So the original vote failed to, um,
To, uh, reverse the decision, so then the complainants would have had to go to court to get a remedy. Correct me when I'm wrong, Ms. Cooper. And then, so, so now, if this compromise went through, then would the Architecture Board go to the court? To, mm, I don't know.
To stand on the ground?
Yeah, yeah, no?
I don't know that the Architecture Review Board, Review Board would, well, the Architecture Review Board's appeal was to the Planning Commission.
Right, right, right.
So this really isn't between the Architecture Review Board and the parties, it's between the Planning Commission.
And the Commission.
Because the decision of the Planning Commission is what got appealed.
Okay.
I guess, in terms of discussion, my, I don't know that the Architecture Review Board, are they willing to discuss matters with the, with the building owners?
I, I think-
I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know.
No, I would say yes.
The Architecture Review Board wants the brick off the building, period.
So then-
They're not gonna move off that.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that there's more to that. It's my understanding.
Well, I wish I would have been privy to that information since you guys sent me on this mission.
Yes, thank you for that.
Uh, so, all right, so then, um,
Mr. President, if there is other information, it can be shared now and voted on.
Okay, so, yes.
I would, I would love to know what that other information is.
So are we appealing, uh, Ms. Cooper, we're appealing the Planning Commission decision, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't wanna make a mess, I don't wanna make a mess of this even further, but, but should that, should the compromise have been between the Planning Commission and the Mi-
No, I mean, I think the Planning Commission deferred to the Architecture Review Board.
Okay.
So, so there, I-
Yeah, I know this, yeah.
There wasn't face-to-face mediation, but there was what's called shuttle mediation between the two.
Right.
And, um, where Mr. Timmerne acted as the mediator, going to one side and then going to the other side and kinda trying to take ideas back and forth. Um,
Yeah.
It, I, my only point was at some point, a decision has to be made, so if, if there's a possibility to make everybody happy.
But that's like, hey, we're beyond that.
Yeah, I don't think we are. Yeah, we're not happy, but at least more.
Okay, is there any more discussion? We have a motion and a second to table?
Yes, Mr. President, if the board's not willing, that's, that's their final. They're not, they're not going to give any, so why are we still struggling at this point?
Counselor, because there's potentially more information that you're not aware of, and that's why I'm asking.
Would you like to share it with us? Because the manager doesn't seem to know the information.
I would like to share it in private. I would like to share it in private, actually, at this point in time, before we move forward.
Okay. All right, is, we have a motion in a second to table this item. Ms. Bell, would you please call the roll for us on the motion to table?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Giacomo?
No.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Holman?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero? I'm sorry. Mrs. Foglio?
No.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
So the item will be tabled by a four to two vote.
No discussion on that? I know I'm out of line, but I mean.
No. Okay, so that, we will not, that item will just be tabled for, I guess there'll have to be more work done between the two parties. More information given to council, before something would be decided. Okay. All right, we come to the part of the meeting where there's tell us something we don't know. Does any counselor have something to share with us this evening?
I do.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mills.
The Wine and Walleye sign up is, is now working, so you can get there to volunteer. There are a ton of slots to work, it's July 26th to 28th. So you can Google Wine and, A-N-D, walleyefestival.com, and then it's like the fish in the middle, I think it says volunteer with us, and it has below volunteer here, has a sign up genius and all the slots, and it's pretty empty, because it's, it's, you know, just up and running, so trying to encourage people to volunteer. You can go on Facebook, and that's Wine, and then the symbol for and, Walleye Festival, Asher Bula, and there's a link there. So if you'd like to volunteer for that, they really need help down there, it gets busy. And then, don't forget the beach glass is this weekend, and we're in a heat wave, so Mr. Manager, do we have any parking issues or bans, or will that be somewhere for beach glass?
Yeah, those have already been, those have already been announced, they're on our website, we did that at the same time we did for the Pride Festival.
And we'll have shuttle, they'll have shuttle service?
I believe they will, yes.
They say this is, this is going to be the biggest one, they have more vendors this year than any year previously, so. Anybody else have anything for tell us something we don't know?
The next Bands on the Beach is June 27th from 7 to 9, and that is the Ernest T. Band.
With regard.
And it's free, F-R-E-E, free.
With regard to Counselor Mills' comment about last weekend's festivals, I just want to say that they went over very smoothly. Thanks for all the citizens for participating, there didn't seem to be any disruptions, and it was a good time had by all who chose to participate, so thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Okay, very good, and I, I think, Ms. Holman, just to echo those, Asher Bula, I think we did good. You know, we had some discussions, this and that, we had our festivals, they went well, they were well received, well attended, and, and that's good, reflection on our city. Anything else?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Were you going to go over the possible, the honoring?
Well, yeah, we'll have to get together at a, that will come up at a council committee, I think. And I think, I'm going to go back and look to see what committee that came out of.
Okay, all right, just keep me posted.
Yes, I will, because we have, we're having requests now to honor different places and so forth, but we at one time addressed that issue, and I'm going to have to have, maybe Ms. Bell could help me, we'll go back and look through to see what committee that worked, was that a separate, because I know we had citizens on it and stuff, but we'll get that information.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Mr. President, it came up at a, at a previous meeting about the southbound Dr. Shelby sign, that sign has been put back up. It did come down during construct, they had some construction on that corner just under the bridge, just north of the underpass on Lake Avenue. So the sign is back up.
Okay, because I thought.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to address council at this time? All you need to do is approach the podium and state your name and your street, and then we'd be happy to hear from you.
Hello, everybody, my name is Micheline Guerrero. I live at 6237 Lake Road West in Asher Bula, Ohio. I am the owner of 1317 Bridge Street, the building that is being questioned here, and honestly, what I'd like to say is that I do feel very informed about the situation. The city manager and my husband and I did have a compromise discussion, as per your request, from the motion last time we were here to discuss the issue, that we had a compromised situation, and we did take the time, very punctually after that city council meeting, to try to figure out what would be appropriate. Lots of different ideas went passed by, I have, you know, I like to bring my evidence. I don't know if I can submit this or not, but this is just a kind of a paperwork to get everybody on the same page. It says, the motion of Ward 3 Counselor, Ms. Holman, to mediate between the appellant and the Architectural Historical Preservation Commission, and then it's a series of emails that went through all of us that I've highlighted, of which one was definitely a decision that was made. We were then told to hold off. I guess I'm just trying to do what I've been asked to do. We're discussing things like festivals in our community, and what I have is a building that looks like it had, I just, I just want it to be over. I want it to look clean, I want it to be painted, I want it to be attractive. We are not in any, we're not financially gaining or losing, I mean, we could potentially, you know, financially lose here if we were asked to take it down, but it's my understanding that the other party has absolutely no interest in a compromise, period. We are very interested in compromising, and which this email trail proves that we are willing to have a discussion about what can we do to, like, come together in the middle. So I guess we're past the point where this is a topic that would be ended or a decision being made tonight, but I, I would like you all to know that, you know, we, we are nice citizens that do the right thing, and this is kind of spinning out of control, I have to get a babysitter every time I come here for me just to sit and say, I'm sorry, a mistake was made, I would like your leniency in that situation, that we can come to a reasonable compromise. I thought we had brokered one, and, you know, our last communication was last Friday at 4:00 PM saying that it was going to be discussed today. So there wasn't really a lot of time to prepare, but I do have, again, I have a copy of this for everybody, and just reminding of what the before and after pictures look like, and hopefully, this can be a mistake that was made, but miniscule in the scope of the success of this city, so thank you for your time, I guess I'll be back. Unfortunately, I'm disappointed that this was not resolved this evening.
Ms. Guerrero, I just want to, because I know I've been at the Architecture Board meetings when you have been there. And so I do know that they have tried to, I think even Mr. Payne, who's a committee member, worked with you and tried to make suggestions and come up with different ideas along the way, so.
I can speak to that, if you wouldn't mind.
I just don't want to give the impression that the Architecture Board didn't do anything, but they, I think it would be fair to say that they did try to.
And I think what you're saying is a little misleading as well, because Mr. Payne did actually come down to our property, and we did work through some things together, however unanimously, every time we've tried to re-appeal to them or reapply to them the proper way, it's been denied in whole. So we did apply some of his designs, and as a person in this community, I am starting to question, you know, like taste versus authority, and this is starting to unravel in a way where I feel like it's just, it's just undesirable. We have appealed to them, we're trying to, I just, I don't know what else to do, I mean, they, no, 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 no. Try this, no, try that, no. I don't know what else to do, other than to plead to you, to say, please, be lenient, I just need five of you. Obviously, somebody's sitting out right now, and I feel like I know where you stand, Mr. Roskovic, so I need all five of you just to say, you know, go ahead and paint that, paint that wood brown, historical brown. Is that my timer?
No, I don't know.
That was a good cue, though, thank you, I mean, like, if someone else, if anyone else, I would, I would be happy to clarify any miscommunication, if there was a concern about something that did or did not happen in regards to this renovation. No? I hope that the next time we can have a conclusion, because we can't move forward until you all decide that it's okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guerrero, we appreciate that. Is there anyone else who would like, yes, Mr. Locata?
Bob Locata, Lake Road. We did meet with Mr. Payne, just want to add on to that, and yeah, he was very great, he offered up some thoughts on putting trim across the top, consistent trim all the way across the top. So we did submit that, resubmit that, a version of that, a compromised version of that, and yeah, they said, they said no. And in the meeting, in the, in the second Historic Review Board meeting, which was the third meeting on this project out of six, they did very clearly state, as a whole, as a, as a unit, that there was no other alternate.
Other than taking the?
Other than taking the break down. So, yeah, so they did do that little, Mr. Payne did do that compromise, but the group, no one else did.
Then it could, okay. Thank you, Mr. Locata.
And on your, your road signs for the road crossings, you might be able to rent those from a sign company? Possibly you could include it in your contract, like for future reference.
Anyone else who would like to address council this evening?
I would, okay, so this is totally off topic, I'm Ashley Bell, the clerk of council. So I was able to attend the Juneteenth meeting, our Juneteenth festival this Saturday, and I was there bright and early, and I did want to say that there was an incident, and I just wanted to shout out our police force for coming very quickly to resolve the incident, and everything after that went very smoothly, and so I just want to, sometimes our police officers don't get as much credit as our firefighters, but our police officers responded to the incident quickly, there were no more incidents, and they were there throughout the day making sure that we were safe. So I just want to shout out to APD.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bell.
Mr. President, did anybody mention about the Pride Festival, did I miss it, or was I?
No.
Nope?
We just said that the festivals were held and they were.
Right, well, I had the opportunity, I know Ms. Mills and Mr. Giacomo also.
Yes, did I.
Oh, you did, I didn't know that. We went down to the Pride Festival, and just, just kudos to Michael Rife and I don't know the girl's name, who's, who's the president of the organization, for a very good festival, it was, it was great, everyone was having fun, and there were no incidences, the vendors were amazing, there were so many vendors, and I just think it was such a good festival on the beach, it just, it reminded me of when we were young in them, you know, the Walnut Beach Fair used to come, and I think everybody really enjoyed it, so I'm hoping it'll get bigger and better next year.
Mr. President, I would like to say thank you to all the city employees, we had a little hiccup this Friday with our payroll, and it was nobody's fault, it was just like, it was a hard drive failure, but the, the city employees, I want to thank them for their support, but I want to especially thank Ms. Sheldon and Kelly, they were here Friday until 9:15, something like that, trying to get everything together, I really appreciate that, I really appreciate.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Ms. Augustine, thank you, Ms. Sheldon, and we appreciate, I'm sure the employees appreciate. Anyone else who would like to address anything this evening? All right, we appreciate you all coming, our next meeting is July?
First.
First, yeah, that's right, July 1st, at 6:30 here in the, in the council chambers. So thank you, and everybody have a safe couple of weeks, thank you. Adjourn.